Is everybody fine or we need a break or anything? You fine?
Let's keep going.
Fine, let's keep going. Alright, so we're going to go back now to administrative item 8A, which is a review of the City Council Representatives to regional county and state bodies. Karen, let me know when you're ready.
I'll give a minute for the chamber to clear. Give you a minute for the chamber to clear.
Okay.
Lot of interest. Okay, each year, the City Council reviews the regional boards that various members of the City Council in the community represent the city on and makes direct staff on what appointments will be made for the following year, for this year 2012. Attached to the item, there's a list of all the various county, regionals, and state advisory bodies, as well as who is the current council designate and whether or not there are current vacancies. If you remember that, well, there are some vacancies, but in addition to that, it is also up to the council on either affirming or changing the appointment of anyone who is currently representing the city on any of these bodies as well. In addition to the City Council representatives, we do have one community member, Jim Golden, who represents the city on the mosquito abatement district. And in a separate agenda item on this council agenda, there's also a request to appoint someone to PAPCA, which is the Paratransit Advisory and Planning Committee. That would be for Joyce Jacobson. But right now, we're just asking you to look at the various City Council representatives to the advisory bodies and to direct staff what to bring back for final action, which is usually put just on the consent calendar for the December 20th meeting.
Great, thank you. I see one correction on this list, I believe, which is the East Bay Economic Development Alliance. It says Brinkman, but if I'm not mistaken, it's Atkin who serves on that.
I checked that, but I don't have a record that that was made, but...
Well, I think, hang on a second. I do go to the executive committee meetings of East Bay Economic Development Alliance, but I think Kurt, you've been on a committee or something?
No, no, I've attended one or two of them, so...
Maybe you share that.
But the thing that I'm concerned about is I got on that through a mayor's conference appointment. It wasn't something that Emeryville had jurisdiction over.
So it may be who is nominated for consideration by the mayor's council for that one.
It had nothing to do with me being an Emeryville rep. It was, it might have been a north county position from the mayor's conference.
Who's got the answer?
Alright, yeah. Hopefully, East Bay EDA would know, but I don't know.
No, it was the mayor's conference.
We can figure out the mayor's conference appointment later, but still, tonight, you need to decide who you want to have as representative from this body.
So, East Bay EDA has a member from every jurisdiction, as well as additional members that are appointed then through the mayor's conference?
No.
No.
They don't have a rep from every jurisdiction.
But we get a rep there?
No.
Oh, we don't?
I'm saying I was the mayor's conference appointment.
So what are we voting on for that organization here?
Well, I thought each city was represented, but if that's not correct, then we should probably punt this one over to the next meeting and let us find out more information on that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mayor West, I have a question on this Emeryville-Oakland JPA appellate council. We have in there that there's a vacant position on there. As I remember, that we only had four members on that appellate council. That's the way we set it up. We had four and Oakland had three. They didn't wake up to that until, that's alright. So delete that vacant there. There's just four members on that JPA.
And we'll just stick to the four members? We'll leave Jack out of that one for now? I don't think we've met, at least not in my two years on council.
No.
I haven't met in 12 years.
In 12 years, we haven't met. Alright, well, then it's not that...
And we don't want to meet.
Excellent.
When Cattell's comes forward with their big mixed-use project, then you'll have to meet.
Okay, thank you. We'll be ready.
Could we ask our new member if she has any interest in any of these positions?
I would also like to relinquish one of mine, so I'll put it out there, just so you know. The East Bay Division of the League of California Cities has been a great opportunity for me to meet other representatives from other cities, but in reality, I am not always able to attend, and Ken Bukowski actually would attend often for those dinners, so I would be happy to give up my position there.
Now, why does it say, on our amended one, item 11, page 11 of 12, League of California Cities, it lists two vacancies, member and alternate.
Well, there are two different things for the League of California Cities. One is the annual conference, and we just appoint someone at that time. We designate someone for that conference. And the other is the East Bay Division, as far as I understand it.
I see.
The Division meets monthly, Mayor, is that correct?
Correct.
So, can we approve this with, if councilmember Asher, you're gonna step up and take your suggestion?
Well, there are a couple of them that, looking at my work schedule, along with my areas of interest that I'm interested in, so I think that the Association of Bay Area Governments is one that I'm interested in, the Alameda County Housing Authority, and perhaps the Gilman Playing Fields Joint Powers Authority.
I would be glad to let you have the...
I knew you would.
And I would be glad to let you have the housing authority.
You got Gilman.
Wow. It could at least be the alternate for A-BAG, that would be fine with me.
Okay, okay.
So, in terms of the housing authority, those are terms that are actually codified at a Board of Supervisors meeting, and my term ends in 2013.
Okay.
But I will submit a letter of resignation so that Emeryville can submit your name to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Ruth.
Well, it's eight, you know it's eight o'clock on a Wednesday in Hayward.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay, so that, so you have Gilman and the housing authority, what was the other one?
As the alternate for A-BAG, is that right?
Yeah.
Alternate for A-BAG.
The Gilman playing fields, I think that was one of them.
Yeah, Nora already.
Okay, I would move that we direct staff to come back with those changes.
I'd second it.
Okay, that was, maybe I just, hold on, make sure that I have this correct. So what I have now then is for AC Transit, Emeryville liaison is Davis and Atkin, A-BAG is Atkin with Asher, the alternate, ACAP is the city manager, Alameda County Housing Authority, councilmember Atkin will resign, and then we will put in a request for Asher to take her place. ACTC of the Alameda County Transportation Commission is Atkin with Brinkman as the alternate. The Paratransit Commission will be done at a separate agenda item. Abatement program is councilmember Atkin as the member with the city manager designate as the alternate. Mosquito abatement district continues to be served by Jim Golden. The East Bay Economic Development Alliance is going to be held over so we can determine whether or not that is an appointment done directly by the mayor's conference. The JPA appellate council, there's only four members, not a vacancy, so that will remain the same. The Gilman Playing Fields Joint Powers Authority will be represented by councilmember Asher. The East Bay Division, League of California Cities, will still be represented by Mayor West.
Unless somebody else is interested.
And the alternate is vacant. And the League of California Cities, what's there now are the delegates from the last conference, but not the ongoing representatives.
So we could take those off, because I think we just appoint them for the next one. And you missed the Alameda County Waste Management Authority, which I would still...
Sorry about that.
...be honored to serve on.
And that is, yes, sorry, Mayor West as member and councilmember Atkin as the alternate.
Correct, that sounds right to me.
Okay, and I hope you received on the dais, the updated roster that includes the additional information that was requested.
Thank you.
Includes the stipends, if any, that are provided to members.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to the next item, which is similar but different. It is item 8C, which is the review of City Council Representatives to our local boards, commissions, and committees for appointments for next year. As I recall, and I'll just frame this discussion, we had a discussion last year when we had this process about the idea of not always keeping the same positions on the same committees and having maybe a two-year flexible voluntary rotation of sorts. And Kurt and I were both in favor of that. So that leaves this wide open, but I will turn to the councilmembers to...
I would say, Jack, is there anything that you'd like to have?
Are we talking about the advisory bodies at this point, or?
It's all of them. So it's the City Council subcommittees, the advisory bodies, which include members of the community, and then also the ad hoc advisory bodies.
I'm very interested in the technology committee.
I could step off that.
Okay. Thank you, Kurt. And also would be happy to serve on Public Works or Transportation or not.
I have served on the Public Works Committee, which I have greatly enjoyed and appreciated, but I am also interested in the Transportation Committee and would be happy to switch if someone was...
I think I'm on the Transportation. I would love to be on the, switch with the, on that.
On Public Works?
So now, what are you guys gonna do?
Well, we're still figuring that out.
So West will go to Transportation and Brinkman will go to Public Works.
That doesn't mean that Asher got either of those.
Uh-huh.
No. I'm on Technology.
You got Technology.
Okay, so advisory bodies?
Sure, let's move on to advisory bodies.
Bike ped.
You want that? They'll be delighted to see you there.
Will they be? Well, that's good news.
That's great.
I'd also be interested in finance, housing, or Marina.
Well, I'd like to go off the housing committee, so Jack, why don't you go on that?
Okay, thank you.
And...
I'm on Marina, and I don't think we've ever had a meeting.
Once a year, yeah, in January.
It's coming up. Your meeting is coming up.
So you're gonna be on that, Jack?
No, I'm gonna stay on the Marina to the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And Kurt, you know, we flipped a coin two years ago for the Finance Committee, and I would, well, I would be willing to offer, I mean, again, I think it's a very important committee, but I'd be willing to offer it to either one of you if that... What do you think, Kurt?
Think about your time, and it's your choice.
I think I'd like to be on the Finance Committee.
I'd be interested in the ECDC. I see there's a vacant vacancy there.
Great.
That'd be great.
It would be in addition to Jennifer.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the ECDC.
Or you said ECDC?
ECDC.
And there's a, I don't know when this meeting, committee meets, but the I-80 pedestrian bike crossing has a vacancy, so I'd be interested in that.
Great. We, you know, almost abandoned, disbanded that committee, but it won't meet often, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, so maybe it'll meet as needed or sporadically or something.
Maybe once the project is...
We really need to have, back me up on this, Steve, another councilmember on the Fire Safety Task Force.
I would like to be on that one.
Good.
We have almost all the vacancies, no, Community Preservation has a vacancy.
How often do they meet, Nora?
Quarterly.
Okay, I'll be on that one, too.
Okay, Jack on Community Preservation.
And then the Ramp?
Right, that's our last, brand-new committee, the Caltrans Ramp Ad hoc Advisory Committee. It was just, it was just birthed officially last meeting.
I, Nora and me, you want?
Oh, good, 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 good.
Those are smiles, I figured you were...
Good, 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 good. Okay, we got 'em all filled in, let's go with what we have.
There was just one thing that I wanted to ask as a result of councilmember West and I talking about this. Are we missing the Park Avenue Committee from this page?
We have a page later that has it, but it's not on this list.
There are no councilmembers on that committee.
Yes. Ah, that's why.
Alright, so do you want to recap?
Okay, so my recap for the subcommittees are Davis and Asher, Brinkman and Davis, Davis and Brink, sorry. Community Preservation Committee is Davis and Asher, Public Safety is Brinkman and Davis, Public Works is Davis and Brinkman, Technology is Davis and Asher, Transportation is Davis and West, Bike Ped is Atkin and Asher, ECDC Advisory is West and Davis, Commission on Aging is Davis and Brinkman, Finance Advisory is Davis and Asher, Housing is Atkin and Asher, Marina is Davis and Brinkman, Public Art is Davis and Brinkman, Caltrans Ad hoc Ramp is Davis and Brinkman, Fire Service Task Force is Davis and Brinkman.
Here's your pattern here.
I-80 Bike Ped Crossing Committee is West and Atkin, and Zoning Update is Brinkman and Davis. And do I have a motion?
Good job.
Motion in a second?
Alright.
Was there a motion in a second on that?
A motioned and second? Who would move that?
My move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And without exception, we will actually see that again next meeting.
Yes, we usually put that on the consent calendar, but, you know, if there was a mistake or someone changes their mind, of course, it can always be pulled.
Great, thank you. The next item is the review of community member applicants to the various boards, commissions, and committees to make appointments for the next year. And I had asked the staff, although when I moved seats, I don't know what happened to mine, to put together a list so that it was easier to kind of make sure we had all the names.
You wanna look over my?
Sure, I'll look over it.
We'll share.
I know I had one. I don't know where I stuck it in here. So, I will entertain, and I don't know if there's any public comment or anyone who would, thank you, who would like to speak on any of these items. Would you like to come forward? Thank you. Thanks for sitting through our meeting.
Hi, so my name is Raw Adcock, and I applied for the Housing Committee. I'm new to the area. I have two young children, one at Anna Yates and one on the way, and we picked Emeryville on purpose to move because of this delicious combination of small town and big city, and I want to be involved. I have a background in nonprofits, community development, and economic development, marketing, and public relations. So I put in my application just yesterday, and I'd love to go tomorrow if I get on it.
That's right, the meeting is tomorrow. Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? All right, then, let's have at it. Shall we take them one at a time? We have the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Subcommittee, and we have three folks who have submitted applications, and I believe we have more than that in terms of vacancies. Am I correct?
That's my understanding.
Right, so I would move Smontie, Rodogard, Betsy, and David Kritzberg.
Second.
Alright, without exception, we will make those appointments. Thank you for offering your time.
I'm sorry, Mayor, hang on a sec, we need to catch up to you.
No problem.
Mayor West?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm looking at the roster here.
Yes.
It looks like there are, unless I'm, never mind. Didn't look at the back.
On the backside, yeah.
Didn't look at the back.
Yeah, there are more.
And we have to talk about that, because we were trying to...
Okay, can we move ahead now?
You ready?
No.
Not quite.
Are we assuming that all of the current members who have asked to be reappointed are also being reappointed by these motions?
Do you mean for the BPAC Committee?
Yeah, for any committee.
I know that, at least, we received an email that the BPAC Committee was notified that if they were interested or not, and that's how we ended up with some vacancies. I would like to clarify that with the other committees.
All the rest of the committee members who are not listed as vacant have indicated they'd like to be reappointed.
For that committee, that's what I understand. I'm not sure if that's true of all committees.
Right, but your motion you just passed appointed three new people, but you didn't explicitly reappoint the existing members.
Includes reappointments.
I think that was implicit, but we can make that explicit if we need to.
Yeah, me, too.
Can we just use these pages?
So, I move the current members who wish to be reappointed be reappointed to the BPAC.
Second.
Great, and without exception, thank you for that clarification. Are you ready for us to move on?
Go ahead.
Okay. Sadly, there were no applicants for the Child Development Center Advisory Committee, which we have vacancies.
However, there is, Mary Ann Doan should be in here as the childcare director. It says vacant.
Oh, good.
That should be written in there.
Thank you for noticing that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is actually for a, someone who is a childcare professional, not the...
Oh, not the director.
Yes, not the director.
She's the secretary up above, I guess. Okay. Next, the Finance Advisory Committee, then, we would reappoint, but those terms actually say that they go through 2013, so I'm not sure that we need to reappoint anyone for that.
Yeah, I had a question about which ones.
This is the Finance Advisory Committee.
Yes.
And my question was about staggering those terms, but I think we had determined it was a two-year term for members, but somehow they all ended up on the same year. If we wanted to be like our other committees, it would make sense not to have everyone's terms end at the same time.
It was, you're talking about finance, right?
I am, although there was another one like that.
Yeah, there's another one with the same problem. I'm trying to find it.
So that's entirely up to the councils, whether or not you want to stagger them or just leave them as is. If you want to stagger them, then you need to think about, you know, maybe adding a year to certain terms, or...
Or you could deal with that when the existing terms come up in 2013 and just appoint people.
That would be fine.
Public art is the same way.
Right, public art, also, it does not have staggered terms, no.
I had a question about the Bike Ped Advisory Committee. Were you appointing, in addition to the current members, all of the applicants, because there are vacancies on that committee? There's two vacancies on Bike Ped in addition to the reappointments.
They will stay vacant.
Okay, that was my question.
Well, so what I see is that there are two resident vacancies, and there is one works-in-Emeryville vacancy and one bicycle organization vacancy. And I'm not sure if these three are all residents, as I recall, or if one of them qualifies to either working in Emeryville or a bicycle organization.
They're all three residents, but I believe David Kritzberg is also employed in Emeryville. I'd have to double-check that.
I'm looking at his...
Yeah.
No.
What do you see?
Let's see.
Any of these can always be held over if you have some questions, and we can...
Well, so I think our intent is we would like to appoint all three, but we would like to clarify who might qualify for either the works-in-Emeryville or the bicycle organization slot.
David's applying as a resident.
So could we ask staff to look into that, inquire, and get back to us for the next meeting?
He works in Oakland.
Oh, okay.
Alright, let's move along.
Alright, so if we can come back to, I'm sorry, back to the Finance Committee. So the final decision there was that we don't need to do any appointments, and we'll discuss the issue of staggering when these terms expire.
Right. The Commission on Aging has no vacancies on my list, and so we don't have to do anything there. The Finance Advisory Committee, we've decided to continue. The Housing, oh, that's different, we don't need to worry about the Housing Advisory, but the Housing Committee is next, and we have three applicants for the Housing Committee. And what I would like to ask staff, or the staff support, is for the three whose terms end, was there any indication of whether they wanted to be reappointed?
Yes, they want to be reappointed.
Okay.
Anyone who's listed here, for, anyone here that's listed as a term ending that the name is listed, requested reappointment.
Okay, with the highlight.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So then we have one vacancy, someone whose term ends next, oh, in...
I would move Raw Adcock, who was certainly interested enough to come tonight, and she's a new member of the community.
I second that.
Sounds good.
Without exception? Great, thank you.
Yay, Raw.
Congratulations.
See what happens when you just show up?
That's the secret.
I want to see you tomorrow night.
Okay, then, moving on to the Marina Committee, we have Eric Raff, who recently applied to be on that committee. And I'm just checking, I'm trying to find the page, but there are vacancies on that committee?
One resident.
Resident and a business rep.
Okay, so is there a second for that?
Second.
And any exception? Nope, it looks like that is another...
Do you have that one?
You just need a chairperson.
The Planning Commission, we are not considering now, that will be in the spring. And next is the Public Art Committee. Who can help me out with how many vacancies we have on that?
There are no vacancies.
There are no vacancies on the Public Art Committee, and we have two people who have applied to be on that committee. What is the will of council?
Well, I have a preference that not everybody's term end at the same time. I'd like the idea of staggering terms here.
This is an opportunity here where you have all these terms ending at the same time. If the council wants to, you know, reappoint some of them and stagger the terms, you can do that here. We would also have to, you know, have to make some revisions to the, where it talks about terms of members, because I would assume you would either appoint some of them for, or you could just do a one-year as opposed to three years, that might be a little bit too long. Just do some for one year and the others for two years. That's if the desire is to have staggered.
Mm-hmm. What's the pleasure of the council?
Could we expand the board by two?
Sure. Sure. Sure.
We'd like to do that.
Kurt, that would be my preference. I think that we could have new blood, and that is the kind of a committee where if you add two more to that to have 11, you still have a group that can have a lively discussion and...
And we have a lot of people that have problems making all the meetings, so I don't think that would really hurt.
So, Kurt, are you...
I'm making that as a motion.
Proposing that we add two and Mariana and Samantha?
Yes.
Okay, I'd second that.
Could... Could we indicate, then, that the two new members have terms that end in 2013, two years from now? And that we choose two others here, or three others, that would end in 2013, and then the others would end in 2012, just so that we don't end up with this configuration again where the entire Committee is...
How about odd numbers in one and even, even numbers do the other?
Great, so if you're an odd number on this list, at this moment, you would be 2013, and if you're an even number, you would be 2012. And then we'll split our two new ones. Is that, would that be fine?
That's good, that's good. No approval of that. Moving along, so...
Do you want to speak to that, Sharon?
Sharon, you're an odd, you're listed in an odd number ranking here.
To be expected. No, I just don't, I didn't have a chance to look at the, at the packet, so I don't, I was just wondering who we have a meeting this week, and it'd be nice to know, you know, to be able to tell people then what their terms are, so...
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I could read that out, or we could make sure that for your meeting, there's a list provided.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We'll do that, we'll give you a list.
So do you want to tell us which of the two new applicants you want to go to 2013?
Both of them, right?
No, actually, since we did the odd-even split, let's say Mariana would go until 2013, and Samantha would be 2012.
Very good.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. And moving on to the Ad Hoc Committees, it looks like we have reappointments until we get to the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee.
Well, then, on the Caltrans Advisory, Albert Repola's name is spelled along, it's R-E-P-O-L-A, and we have a vacant, it's vacant there, but wasn't Liz Altieri on that Committee?
Liz attended one meeting, and I think Trudy, I can't remember her last name, was there.
Jim, what do you say?
Sharon's got a little mistake to me.
Please.
It's not a mistake, but I just, I'm sorry, I've been out of town and a little distracted. But I know that with our Committee, we usually suggest that somebody come to one of the meetings to see what it's like, and neither one of these folks, I mean, have been to a meeting. Just to know what it is, I mean, some people have a, you know, perhaps preconceived notion of what happens at the meetings, and there's a lot more admin, I mean, and that sort of process that goes on. So I just wanted to make that comment, I'm sorry.
I think that's a really important comment, and I think the problem is the timing, that suddenly this sneaks up on us, and with the noticing, you know, that needs to be said in September, so that people have an opportunity, I think, to attend the meetings before this meeting in December, but, you know, I don't know what to say. Any other comments on that? Are you still comfortable?
Well, on this Caltrans Ramp Committee, would somebody contact Liz Altieri? I'm pretty sure she was in on the original formation of that. So if we could just contact her, and if she wants to go on, to remain on there, we'd continue it.
Okay.
One of the other things for this Committee is that I assume that afterwards, that the Committee will vote on when their regular meeting and chair is. But at the time that this body was created by the council, there wasn't a set number of members of the public. So I, it was an arbitrary number of five. It could be less than five, it could be more than five, but I just wanted to point that out to the council, that that was just a number.
Well, we'll let them come back with their recommendation. How about that?
Great, that sounds great. We do have, we have a business representative position vacant on the Fire Service Task Force, but no applicants at this time. And I'm going to move straight to the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee. We have had three folks who have applied for this Committee, and the one vacancy is a business position rather than a resident position.
Mayor West?
Yes.
I believe there's a fourth applicant, also Lee Marymore. We...
Could you say that name one more time?
Lee, L-E-I-G-H, Marymore, M-A-R-Y-M-O-R, of Lunt Marymore, the plumbing company on 45th Street. We, I think we have an application from him as well. This vacancy is very recent. It just happened, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and we actually advertised it, but we made the closing date December 30th.
Oh.
So there may still be people out there who might want to apply, who didn't realize the appointments were going to happen tonight.
Perhaps we should hold that item over, but consider those that are, I know that there's issue on file, consider everyone active until we, if we receive more...
Right, all right.
Appointments, that'd be fun.
Yeah, I, yeah, we were, if this is, if it's okay with you, we were planning to bring this back in January for you to make the appointment.
That's good.
I did not get a copy of Lee Marymore, I don't believe, unless it was in today's packet. Did you guys get that?
It was literally just given to me till today, which is why the star is on your list, that we were going to request that you hold this over till January.
Oh, thank you.
One hand didn't realize that that vacancy notice had gone out for the 31st, as opposed to the others that were due before this meeting. So we thought it was just prudent to hold that one over.
Thank you for pointing out the asterisk that I missed. So then, if we're holding that over, if that's fine with everyone, the Zoning Update Steering Committee, my only question on this is that one of the members who was a resident, and still is, Vanessa Comerly, is now also on the Planning Commission, and whoever, I guess, Councilmember Brinkman and Davis who serve on this, does that mean we have four Planning Commissioners on this zoning update steering?
We have three official representatives from the Planning Commission. We have a fourth person who is a resident who happens to be on the Planning Commission. All the meetings of the Zoning Update Steering Committee are noticed as meetings of the Planning Commission and the City Council, just as all Committees are, in case a quorum shows up, but no official Planning Commission actions can be taken. So, and it's been that way for quite a while, actually. I'd like to point out also that the terms of the Zoning Update Steering Committee are indefinite, so you're not making reappointments tonight. We do, however, have one vacancy for a business representative, and we don't have any applicants.
We need those business folks involved. Thanks, Bob, for taking notes. All right, I think that concludes for now all of the Committee applicants. Thank you, council. We'll move to item 8D, which is consideration of the 2012 calendar of city holidays and city council regular meetings. I know last year I had made a special request, and I do not have that request this year in terms of July or August, so I am just leaving that up to the council.
If I could ask staff, Mr. O'Keefe, what works best for the staff? You know, it's the beginning of our fiscal year. Is it better to have the holiday in August or July in terms of the operation of the city?
Well, I can't think of any difference between the two of them. I mean, we did it for years as July, and we were just fine, so...
I don't care one way or the other. Anybody care?
Seeing where it is in 2012, I do, I do have a preference for the third, because then there's a couple of days, contiguous days off, so that would be good.
I would agree with that, just because the holiday happens to land on Wednesday that, next year.
Right. And then I want to thank...
So what does that mean?
Cancel in August. Cancel in July.
Cancel in July. We're all agreed on that? Okay.
Yeah, and then in terms of September's conflict, I want to thank Karen for taking a look, and that is, the September 18th is a conflict for me, where I wouldn't be able to attend.
But then, Ruth, what about the, by following that, the other one is...
Yeah, the October, the October 2nd meeting is not a conflict for me.
So we're okay with October 2nd?
Yeah, and I'm quite, depending on your pleasure, I'm quite happy to have a special meeting either on the 11th or the 25th.
When we considered this last year, and we ended up canceling one of the meetings in April, it was hard, as I recall, for staff to move a meeting earlier or later, or to have, you know, back-to-back.
Although there's what, almost a year's notice here, so...
The agenda preparation overlaps between the two meetings, that's the problem. It's not a matter of getting ready now for it, it's...
It's that it's not, it's not that practical.
Yeah, it's hard for us, because we end up trying to prepare two different agendas at the same time. We just don't have the horsepower to do it, so it's better for us if you just cancel it.
And that's what we did last year in April, and we canceled one of our meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what's the pleasure of the rest of council?
Well, I don't have any objection to that, because if anything serious comes up, we can always call a special meeting.
Correct.
Yes.
So I think that would work well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's the...
The September 18th.
18th, thank you.
All right. Without exception, everyone, well, that'll come back also for next meetings.
Actually, this does not come back, so we need approval.
Okay. Is there any objection?
Was there a motion in a second?
Do I have a motion?
I feel moved.
I'll second it.
Any objections? Nope, then that passes, thank you. With that, my agenda has come to an end. Is that correct, or am I missing something? I'm sorry, oh, yes, the reports, thank you. I didn't used to have that. So department heads?
You're doing great.
Thank you. No? And council members?
Oh, no, I asked my question before, that's okay.
Any reports on meetings attended? All right, with that, I adjourn our meeting.
Do we now need to announce the closed session?
And I open our closed session meeting, which will take place immediately.
Very well done.
Gary, nice to see you.